That's my gavel. Okay, call to order, this is the special city council budget workshop for Thursday, May 10th, 2018. Will everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council will take a moment for a moment of silence, you're welcome to join us if you'd like. Thank you, be seated. All right, item number one is the workshop discussing finance options for the new police station and other public facilities. Who's up first?
I'll get us started. First, I want to introduce Tyler Trout, our financial advisor with First Tryon. They do a lot of, a lot of good work for us in reference to our bonds, financial planning and things like that. Before we get into Tyler's presentation in reference to funding for the, funding options for the new police station, council at your, at your seats provided a couple of handouts. The top page is the, the proposed site plan for the new facility. Obviously TGK Drive is to the lower end of that, to the right side of the, the yellow rectangle, which would be the proposed new station, would be a secure parking lot for our police officers as they're bringing in prisoners, as they're, as they're parking the cars to enter the station. To the left would be the visitor parking lot, your public side of things, and you can see that in relation to the existing police station. And I'm not going to spend too much time on this, we can circle back around for questions and everything, maybe after Tyler finishes. The next page, these are just proposed elevation renderings. The one at the very, the image at the very bottom would be the, the front elevation, and then the one above that obviously is the rear elevation, and then you've got the two side elevations there. What we're proposing to do is to try to keep, keep with a residential feel with the building, which is why we're showing the hip roofs on there, instead of just a straight gable roof. Hard, your masonry board, hardy plank type siding. Right now, this image is showing it over a brick, kind of knee wall on the bottom, with trying to match the brick to the existing city hall. It doesn't necessarily have to be brick, we could go with a stone base like we did at the new fire station. You know, envisioning the, the hardy plank siding, matching what we have here at the Glennon Center, what we have at the Beach Club, what we have at the new fire station, trying to stay consistent, but not having an industrial looking, you know, flat roof type police station. The last page out of that handout is just the, is the floor plan. I can tell you that this has already changed, the square footage hasn't, but just rearranging the puzzle pieces, you know, so that the function and flow on the interior work for, for the way we need it to as a police station. So, just, just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at, and we can get into further conversations with that either later on this evening, or as, you know, in subsequent meetings, as we go through the design phase on the police station. With that, it looks like most council has their, their, either their computer or their packet stuff. I'm going to turn it over to, to Tyler. I will go ahead and tell everybody that the, well, if I turn this on. I realize some, a lot of this stuff, because it's numbers, it's going to be very hard to, may be hard to see from, from the audience, but tomorrow we'll have this, the stuff that Tyler's going through tonight, we will have it up on our website. So it'll make it a lot easier for, for people to be able to view. So, with that, Tyler, perfect. I'll turn it over to you.
Perfect. Thanks Charlie. Again, Tyler Trout, our firm is First Tryon Advisors in Charlotte, North Carolina. We work with municipalities to help them through financial planning and then the execution of debt transactions. And so, I've got some information here tonight that talks about the various financing scenarios that are in front of you to pay for the proposed police station. We've got two different scenarios that we'll talk through, a low cost estimate and a high cost estimate. What's the impact of both of those? So we can show you what the, what the financing structure is going to be that we're proposing, and also what the impact is going to be on your budget each year. We want to make sure that if we borrow this money, we've got the revenues coming in every single year in our budget to pay for it. And so that's what we're going to talk through. We're going to end up with a financing calendar that's going to outline the next steps for this financing that gets you your money in time to fund the project later this fall. And so with that, I'm going to jump in, and I'm going to start on the second page, which is up here now. The second page shows a table, and it's a comparison of two different scenarios. The highlighted rows are a couple of things I want to point out. Both of the scenarios, what we're showing is what's called an installment purchase revenue bond. In South Carolina, the primary way projects like police stations and fire stations get funded is either through a general obligation bond, which is the lowest overall cost of debt, but that's where you pledge the full faith and credit of the, of your municipality, of your tax base. So you will raise property taxes to repay that debt if monies are not available. In South Carolina, you can only issue general obligation bonds up to eight percent of your assessed value without a referendum being held. And so that is going to push you all away from that option. Your eight percent debt capacity is not sufficient to cover all of that. And even if it were, we would suggest to you to maybe look at the installment purchase revenue bond route, because it's only slightly more expensive, and you preserve that eight percent debt capacity, which is, which is your primary resource. Other than cash, if you need some money in a hurry, you can go and borrow with an eight percent GO bond. You could go to the referendum process as well. These don't show that, given the time it takes to go to the referendum process, the cost of it as well. Just, just waiting until early next year to be able to do your project doesn't meet from a construction perspective either. So we're focused on what's called the installment purchase revenue bond, which is where you will pledge the police station as collateral, and then you will agree to make budgetary appropriations every single year in your budget to pay the debt service. So that's what an installment purchase revenue bond is, and I've got some graphics later in this presentation that describe it in more detail. We can go there if folks have questions. I'm going to drop down in the highlighted rows. Scenario one, as I said, low cost estimate. The par amount, which is the amount that you would borrow, is $3,070,000. It's a $3 million project cost, plus some issuance cost. There are legal fees, there are financial advisor fees, there are bank fees, bank council fees. And so we assume that those also get paid from the proceeds of the bond issued. So that's why the borrowing amount is slightly higher than the project costs that we've got assumed. Scenario two, it increases that project cost by about, well, exactly a million dollars. My understanding is that that project is somewhere estimated around three and a half, maybe 3.6. So we're going to show you low and high, it's probably going to be someplace in the middle. We are assuming that we finance this with a bank, so rather than sell it in the public markets where you prepare an offering document and place it with investors, we're going to assume that we go get a bank loan. It's a lower cost way of doing it, it's easier for staff as well, and it, it's a really good fit for a project this size at three to four million dollars. Question?
Yeah, the three points, the 3.75 percent interest rate?
Right, yes ma'am.
Was that determined, like how's that determined since it hasn't gone out to market?
Right, so this is just an assumption that we're using for planning purposes. We're going to competitive bid this.
Okay, so it could be more, or it could be less?
Could be less, yes, could be more or less. And rates are, rates are moving up on us over the last, since January really, for the first 90 days of the year, rates were way up. And they've flattened out a little bit since that time, so we don't know what that rate's going to be. We do a lot of these, and so we, we're using a current market estimate, but again, it could change. Okay? So, bank placed installment purchase revenue bond, three or four million dollars, those are the scenarios we're going to go through. I'm going to jump in. So let's start on page three. On the right-hand side, the column on the left is your existing payments on your outstanding debt that's paid from property taxes. And so if you'll look at those payments, they're about $750,000. They increase in 2020, that's the fire station debt that's raising it up on you. And then they are relatively flat, and then they go away in 2031. If you look at the principal column, which is the second column from the left, you'll see that the principal payments in the early years are lower, and then they increase over time. The reason that we're doing that is we're trying to achieve what's called an overall level debt service portfolio. So, your payments in every year, we're trying to get them all level, all equal, not just series by series, project by project, but overall level, just for budgeting purposes. It's also going to lower the payments in the early years, which is going to help us offset a tax increase, and also help us fit this payment into the budget. So if you look all the way out at the total debt service on the right-hand side, what you'll see is there about 900, about a million dollars in total in those first few years, and then about $940,000 every single year. So we are fitting our new payments around the existing payments to try and achieve an overall level payment.
Tyler, one question that, that came up earlier in some conversations. Explain the all-in TIC, the fact that it's shown at the 3.98 percent, please.
Sure. It, it just includes your issuance cost. So, that is a higher rate, because it's 3.75, it lets you pay the bank, and then it says, well, what are the issuance costs? $70,000? What is that in, when expressed as a percentage? That's what the all-in true interest cost means. It's all-inclusive of your fees.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, let's flip over to page four. And so page four, this is the analysis where we're going to show you how you can afford it, and what the impact could be to the city. And so, if you start in column two, the collected value of a mill, for every mill that's levied, levied in the city, about $57,000 comes in. So what we want to do is know, what in our current budget are we levying for debt service? That's shown in column four. You'll see $751,000, that's what you're paying right now, and that equates to 13.2 mills or so. That's in your budget. And so if your value of a mill, your tax base grows over time, 13.2 mills is going to produce more revenue in the future than it does today. So you don't have to have a tax increase to get higher revenues in for the city. And so what we want to know is, based on projections of the value of a mill, what is it going to grow at over time? What are our future payments going to be? And how much are we short? Or how much do we have in excess of our, our needs without raising taxes? Column five should look familiar, that's your existing debt service. Remember the $750,000 number? Column six are the total payments from the police station financing. Column seven adds them together, so that's that total column we talked about on the previous page. And column eight is the excess revenues that you have over your debt service. And they're negative for the first four years. And what that's saying is the payments are going to be higher than the revenue generated from 13.2 mills. And so that means we have a, we have, it's insufficient to cover the debt service, so we have to find some other resources. So you can do a couple of things. We can raise taxes, that will generate more revenues to us. We can find money in the budget. We can appropriate fund balance. And then we've got in this presentation, the trash and recycle fee being shown as an offset for those expenses, which would free up money in your budget to cover the shortfall. So, if you tick through this, column nine says, if we wanted to raise taxes by the amount required to cover the shortfall, how many mills? And if you drop down all the way to the bottom of column nine, in total, it's 2.7 mills. It's 2.7, and that's really because in 2020, I'm in column eight, you'll see that the, the amount of money that we're short is $170,000. Divide that number by about $60,000, it gets you to around 2.7 or so. That's that value. But I look at column eight, and I see the negative values only for a few years, and then they're positive in the future, as, we probably don't need to raise property taxes for that. We should be able to find some other revenue source to cover that over the next few years, because we know that the payments go down in the future, and then we're back into the black. And so that's why we show in column 11, the, the potential trash and recycle fee of $480,000. And the idea is that, right now, you are offering those services, you are paying for that. And so if you offset some of those expenses with a revenue source, then you'd have freed up dollars in your budget every year to go and make this, this payment, the $170,000 shown in column eight. No longer would you have an issue where you need to appropriate fund balance or raise property taxes, because we freed up $480,000 in our budget. And in addition to freeing up that money, column 13 is showing you, if, if you levied that tax, well, not tax, excuse me, if you levied that fee, which I believe, and Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong here, I think it's, it's $10 per household per month, is what we've assumed to get to the-
And that's, and that's based on 4,000 households?
Perfect.
Which is about where we are right now.
Okay. So, if you were to impose that fee, the $480,000 would come in, and in this scenario, we would only need, in its, in its peak year, 2020, $170,000, which leaves you in column 13 with the rest of that available. Those are general fund dollars that you can now use for other purposes, build fund balance, offer new services, whatever you'd like to. All right, I've been pretty detailed on that page. Any questions about that? Okay. So, page five, it's the exact same presentation. Folks, I apologize. Actually, are you clicking along?
Yep.
Terrific.
Yep, you're good.
Terrific. It's the exact same presentation, we're now just increasing the borrowing amount. It's more expensive, so we're going to pay more interest and more principal. So if you look at the principal and interest columns on the table on the right-hand side, you'll see that we're borrowing 4, $4,070,000, and the total interest cost is about $2 million. Compare that with the page that we showed you just a moment, a moment ago. I think the interest was just about, is 1.4, yeah, 1.4. So there's an additional $500,000. Borrowing more money, you pay more interest to the bank. That's how it works. Get back there. Okay, same concept, we're trying to achieve overall level payments, that's the far right-hand column, they're a little bit over a million dollars every single year. So, what is the impact to us? Let's go to page six. No changes in any of our assumptions to columns two, three, or four. Five is exactly the same. Column six is the only change, we have higher payments. And so, column eight, which is where we are highlighting any years in which we're showing a deficit, it's, the numbers are a little bit larger, and they last for a little bit longer period of time. And so same thing, rather than 2.7 mills, we would have to levy an additional three and a half to cover that increased deficit. And the number that you're really looking at is, in the 2020 budget again, we're missing about $217,000. We would have to find that money from cash, cut some other service, some other expense, or raise property taxes. And so if we have the $480,000 freed up in our budget, because we no longer have to support that service, you would be able to cover that amount, and then still have money left over for other services. Yes, ma'am?
Does the, so for both scenarios, column nine, the 0.95 in the first year, looking at scenario two, the 0.95 in the first year, and then the 2.52, that assumes that we're raising the millage rate by 0.95 the first year?
And then, yes-
And then, again, 2.52, and then that total, that 3.47 carries on throughout the rest of the-
Yes, ma'am.
And it would hold over for seven years instead of four, because it's a larger number, is that correct? We would be in the red, seven years.
That, that's right. So in, in this scenario, if, if you raise the property taxes, you would no longer be, you'd no longer have a deficit. And so you would be in the black every single year in this, in this scenario.
Now, there wouldn't be an overage, if it would just be raising it by this millage rate, would-
Would get you enough. That's right.
But it's not going to be over, it's not going to be in excess.
It gets you to, it gets you to that minimum.
That's, that's right.
To that four million minimum, yep.
Question, Charlie. Do I recall, I, I know you were talking about doing the, the trash and recycle fee at $10 per household. Do I recall you saying we pay 18?
Our current rate is $14.81 per house, per month.
Okay.
So, in essence, what we, if, if council were to elect to go this route, starting with the, the upcoming fiscal year, starting in October, in essence, what we would be doing is charging for trash. We would, we would be covering the cost on the, on the recycle, on the program. And again, since, since we're talking about this, I do want to reiterate, we're not discussing charging for trash to pay for a police station. What we're, what we would be looking to do is to offset the cost of a service to free up tax dollars to be able to add services. Some may say tomato, tomato, but I mean realistically, that's, I mean, that's the, the way that we, we view it, is that we're freeing up those tax dollars, to be able to, you know, put that into, you know, additional street maintenance, additional park maintenance, public safety staff, maintenance staff, things like that. You know, as, as Tyler mentioned, increasing or adding services by offsetting the cost of the current services being offered at no charge.
So to simplify it for our former marine here, right now, we pay the residents' trash fee of $15 a month.
Rounded.
We are going to ask them to pay 10 of that, so we're only going to pay five of it. Got it?
Okay.
Charlie?
Yes, ma'am.
A question. Looking at the proposal of charging a user for your $10 a month, the calculation shows an excess-
Mm-hmm.
Once we cover the-
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
What would, what would the off, like what would the amount need to be, the fee need to be to just cover the portion of the debt payment versus having an excess?
We need $217,000. So, what's 4,000 households divided by?
Mm-hmm. You're, you're right there on it.
And would that be?
Whoops, too many zeros.
Oh, it's not, thank you. Thanks, sorry.
Yeah, you're, you're right at about five, five dollars.
So five?
Just to cover the, the nugget, so to speak. Yes, ma'am.
To cover in year?
The, the peak year, 20.
The peak year.
Peak year 20, okay. So like the first year, we could charge like a $2 fee?
If that's what, if that's what council elected to do.
As an actual?
If, if you were just, if you wanted to, if council were to elect to charge a, a trash fee just to cover, to offset, just enough revenues just to cover the debt, then yes, you, you would look at, at some incrementals in there to, during those, those years that are shown as, as your deficit years.
And that would be scenario? And that would be scenario one?
No, that's looking at scenario two on the four main-
That's looking at scenario two, okay, because I, if I did my math, swagged it real fast, the difference between interest payments between one and two is about 300,000?
Well, I had a little bit more than that, 650,000.
650,000.
Let me just confirm.
Two million and 1.4.
I think it's about 500.
Okay. So the difference in interest-
Just 4.97.
4.97, okay.
The, the caution, or I guess, the recommendation that I would, that I would give to council is, you're going to have increasing expenses. We, we already know that there are additional plans, yeah. Catawba Park, additional patrol officers due to jailing situation. And that's not including just additional officers needed just to be on patrol. This plan, the plan that we're working on envisions bringing dispatch services back to, back to the police station, so that you would actually have somebody in the building 24/7. You know, which is the way we used to have it until 2008, 2009, when we started contracting it out to York County. Now you've got folks in the building Monday through Friday, you know, eight to four type thing. At night, weekends, you know, you don't necessarily have somebody in the building. You know, they have to come in, pick up the phone, and they're in touch with dispatch at that point. Yeah, it, these additional revenues absolutely frees up options, I would say, if you were to do the, the $10 per house per month. It, it gives you options to increase street maintenance, increase park maintenance, add additional maintenance staff, you know, bring on, you know, to increase the service level on our debris collection, curbside debris collection and things like that, to, to make that more efficient, make it more timely. You know, start going through the CIP as far as, you know, after the, after our strategy workshop in June, here are the priorities, well, here's ways we can, we can easily start checking those things off, and getting those things done, and providing, providing that to the residents. So, or, you know, if council elected, as Tyler had indicated, those funds could go, go, go into fund balance, into reserves, to where if there is a big, big project coming up three, four years from now, we could bank that money, pay cash for it, versus taking on debt, you know, those type things. So, it opens up options that aren't currently available right now, in being able to offset the cost of that service that's being provided. So, again-
Tyler, I'll turn this back over to you, unless there's other questions on that.
So we provide some summary information on seven. Again, just highlighting the primary differences. Scenario two, you borrow an additional million dollars, and so you pay an additional amount of interest expense on it. The total debt service is, is higher by about 1.5 million dollars, 1 million being the principal, and about $500,000 being the expense. And unless there are questions on the scenarios, I'll keep moving through. Page eight is just an illustration of what would happen if $480,000 was freed up in your budget. So if you had $480,000 every single year, and you wanted to go borrow money to finance projects, what could that do for you? And the answer is, $480,000 a year, or 15 years, could result in about five, 5.5 million dollars in projects being funded. I want to emphasize, we're not suggesting that you levy the 4, $480,000 and take that money to repay debt service, we, we couldn't do that. And so this is just saying, if you had $480,000 of property taxes in your general fund budget freed up, what could you do with that money? Just wanted to illustrate the power of that, it's about 5.5 million dollars.
Are you saying it's only going to be used for projects, we can't pay down debt soon?
No, no. What I was trying to make sure that we, I did not express is, is that you could or would want to levy the fee, the $480,000 per year, and take that money to pay for a police station or other general fund projects?
We'll pay off the fire station.
Sure, right. And the last page that I've got in here is a calendar, just to discuss next steps. And so if, if council decided to, to move forward with the police station financing, and was in agreement that a bank placed installment purchase revenue bond is the way to go, which is our recommendation, a few things would have to happen over the next few months to have money in hand to actually construct the facility late August, early September. You'd have to have two readings of an ordinance, of course, and that would occur per this schedule, and it's bolded here, one in July, on July 16th, and then the second and final reading of the bond ordinance in August. Between that, those two dates, what we would be doing is sending out a competitive bid, request for proposals to banks, that we would be determining who the winner was, based on the terms and conditions that were provided to you all. Through that process, we'd be working with your attorneys in that process. You would be forming the corporation, which is, is something that's unique to the installment purchase revenue bond. I'll just spend one moment on that for a second here. The installment purchase rev-
Next page.
Yep, why don't we, that's a good point, Charlie. Why don't we jump to page 12? And let's just look at the, the chart down at the very bottom, once everyone's there. Do you want to flip it on there? And so, the city is on the bottom right-hand side, you're ultimately the borrower of the money. But what you're going to do is form a corporation. It is a corporation whose only purpose is to borrow this money and then actually build the police station. The governing body of that corporation will be members of staff and council. And what will ultimately happen is, that corporation will borrow money from the bank. It will construct the facility. And then the city will enter into an agreement with that corporation, where the city is going to have access to that facility. The city will lease the land to the corporation. So there's, it's a legal mechanism clearly, that was created to keep you from having this debt count against your eight percent debt limit. The idea is, because you are not borrowing the money, the corporation is borrowing the money, you are simply purchasing an installment of that asset over 15 years. That's what your payment is. Every time that you make a payment, you're really buying a fifteenth of the asset from the corporation, and at the end, you own it. It's yours. That's how that works. It's a little bit more complicated. Yes, ma'am?
So there's no impact to our bond rating, then?
No more impact than there would be from you borrowing the money through a GO bond. It's, it's still tax-supported debt. So, if a rating agency looks at your credit profile, they're going to see 3.5 million dollars of debt. Whether it's installment purchase revenue bond, or a general obligation bond, it's, it's debt that you are pledging taxes to repay. So, there is always an impact. When we borrow money, we know that that's going to worsen our credit profile slightly, but, but no more so by going with an installment purchase revenue bond than a general obligation bond, if that makes sense.
The impact to our AA3 rating on a borrow of, let's say, scenario two, the 4 million?
Sure.
We're, we're not talking about, we're now all of a sudden dropping to a AAA3, from a double A3 type thing, right?
No, I, I don't believe there's any rating pressure on you. You've got unbelievably strong wealth metrics, your property tax values are excellent, you really jump off the charts. I would be very surprised if during one of your rating surveillance calls, this transaction were to cause any sort of negative pressure. It's possible, it's always possible, but I would be surprised given the size.
What if we went with the route where we had the 480,000, and we had excess, or we had additional revenue?
Sure.
I mean, that would ultimately offset it, too, right?
I, I think that would help, and where I think that would help you is that your financial performance would improve. You would be dropping more cash into fund balance every single year, and that is a metric that the rating agencies are following and concerned about.
Thank you.
And just real quick, as, as Tyler and I walked through the, the IPRB process, yeah, it kind of makes you raise your eyebrow a little bit, you know, we're going to do what? This is a common tool used by cities all over the state-
That's right.
-due to the eight percent cap on the debt.
That's right.
I'm gonna go back to the calendar real quick.
Sure.
Um, counsel, if I can, uh, if you'll go back to your calendar page, um, just to kind of, kind of where we are in comparison to this calendar in regards to the police station and, and why some of these, uh, are relatively important. Obviously, May twenty-first, um, we have our, our regular council meeting. Uh, at that point in time, we'll be asking council to officially award, uh, the project to Randolph and Sons, um, builders and, and their team. At that same time, I'll also ask council to be able to expense, uh, from our fund balance, approximately two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, okay, out, out of our reserves. That allows us to get, uh, get cranking on your architectural, uh, engine, uh, your civil engineering, structural engineering, plumbing engineering, mechanical, electrical, um, uh, soil testing and things of that nature. These are considered soft costs. At the time that you close, that we close on the bond, which would be, um, yeah, before the end of August, we re, are able to reimburse and put that money back into our reserve funds. But if, if I can't get, if we can't get moving on those type things, it's, it's going to push this, this back because right now we have a proposal, just, just shy of two point seven million dollars to build the building, okay? That doesn't include your FFNE, um, and, and a few other things that I would like, uh, for council to consider. Um, your total borrow, um, as Tyler indicated, you're in that three point six, three point seven. Um, I think max, as we sit here today, three point eight. But we need to go through some of these things and get that process started so that we can drill down what is the exact cost on everything. I know Chief is working, I've been working very diligently on the FFNE. Uh, that's, uh, fixtures, furnishings, uh, and equipment, um, that go into the police station. Um, we have a real opportunity, um, if we're able to, um, put a little bit of money into the existing police station of creating an operations center, uh, that would house, uh, the majority of public works and, uh, utility department. The, the next, uh, part of that, um, and without this, it makes it a lot more difficult to be able to do that, the, that operations center, is I think it's, it's time for us to get out of the boat storage business, uh, and, and manning that, that, that lot, uh, that we have over there. Um, that space would be much more useful for the city as a material storage and fleet vehicle area. That allows us to clean up, um, the, uh, the maintenance yard, um, that's down where the lower tennis courts are now. Uh, we would still need that building, um, for bulk material storage and some equipment storage. But if we were able to utilize the boat storage lot for, uh, material storage and fleet vehicle and move our public works, um, and utility staff into the existing police station, um, it, it drives our efficiencies up exponentially. If we're to remain, uh, in the boat storage business, we're bringing in approximately thirty thousand dollars a year on that, and over the next year or two, we're easily gonna need to spend. But I would say between low-end fifty thousand, but probably closer to seventy, seventy-five thousand, um, redoing the parking lot, restriping it and things of that nature. It's been at a round fifty percent, uh, capacity for the last three, four years. Um, as we've all seen, there are lots of storage facilities that have, uh, popped up all over the place on Gold Hill and, and, and one sixty. Personally, I don't see that as a service, uh, area that the city should be focused on and in. Uh, I think that's a valuable area, uh, for our city operations to be able to utilize. Uh, gets us more centrally located geographically, um, to be able to service the east and west side of the city. Um, but again, if we're able to move forward beginning May twenty-second on the engineering, um, and, and the design work and things of that nature, we're able to, on, you know, as we come into the July sixteenth meeting where, um, Tyler's showing first read of the bond ordinance, you know exactly what the dollar figure is. Yeah, and this is what it's paying for. Yeah, and this is, this is the furniture that's going, yeah, this is the, the number of desks that are going in there. This is how much dispatch, uh, uh, console is gonna cost us and things of that nature. We're getting those prices put together now. Um, and as we fine-tune things, um, with the, um, with the, uh, construction and, and design team, that's gonna drill that number into a very precise number. Obviously, we always add ten percent, uh, from, from a contingency standpoint and include that in, into the borrow. So as you're looking at these two scenarios, um, the three million or the four million, I would say it's, it's probably better to look at the four million numbers, knowing that we will be less than that. Uh, when, you know, based on doing that type scenario.
Expense any money to get that operations building working?
Uh, so, some of the, some of the bond costs, you're, you're right now looking at anywhere between a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars.
For the old?
For the old police station, correct. Um, and that may be on the high end. Um, we're, we're working through those numbers now. Um, basically doing a covered parking area out back, um, where the fuel tank is. It's just an open parking lot, uh, type area. Potentially some, um, some helical piers on the back left corner. Um, but again, that's me, that, that would be evaluated. Um, everything else is really gonna be more from a cosmetic standpoint, uh, maybe some interior wall removal, things like that. Um, just to, and allow for, instead of having two very small offices as they exist today, having a larger storage room, you know, for, um, for city storage and things like that, for materials and, and supplies and things of that nature. That is a retention pond. Stormwater. Uh, because we've increased the impervious area of the lot, uh, we have to do onsite water quality, and that would be a, uh, the, um, drains from the parking lot and things like that would be, would go into that. That's what the green circle is on the site plan. So again, just wanted to kind of let, it, let council know where we are from a, from a calendar perspective, okay? Um, yeah, I can't, we can't get you a, a, a precise enough number without going through the engineering, i- if that makes sense. So we're gonna need to spend, you know, this, this two hundred and sixty, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on the front end, but before the end of the fiscal year, um, at the close of the bond, that money comes back to you, okay? So the, the, the two point six million that was in the proposal, it's included in that cost, in that two point six, where we're, that, that starting point that we're at. So I don't want you to think that this two hundred and sixty-six, two hundred and sixty-five is in addition to. It was part of that proposal cost. I had the contractor pull those numbers out so we knew specifically what our soft cost would be. Uh, and again, not asking, yeah, obviously, we don't have that on the agenda for council to approve tonight, um, but did want to alert council that, um, I'll be bringing that to you May twenty-first. So, um, I think that's really, if, if we're able to hit these target dates, um, that count, that Tyler has laid out before you here, you're looking at, uh, um, just after Labor Day groundbreaking, um, and probably a late June, early July of twenty nineteen ribbon cutting. Um, they're in the facility and we're operating from there. Um, we are, um, from, is it fair to say November? Or shoot, are we talking October one or October thirty-one with, uh, Fort Mill?
I think that we're looking at October one.
Okay.
As the last date, and I'm trying to negotiate a little bit longer, but I don't know if that's gonna work.
Fort Mill has been very generous to us, um, for as long as I can remember. Prisoners that we pick up, we're able to take to Fort Mill's holding cell. Uh, they have an agreement with us, an agreement with York County Sheriff's Department. Um, the PRIA, um, which is the jail standards, the compliant, the PRIA compliance increases every single year to where Fort Mill is moving towards closing their facility altogether. Step one is we won't be able to take there. Step two, soon thereafter, the sheriff's department won't be able to, uh, won't be able to take there. Um, what, what's envisioned in our plans is a twelve-hour, is that right?
Six hour.
Six-hour holding facility to where somebody that isn't, based on the, based on the crime committed, if they, if it's not required that they have to go to Moss Justice, we could bring them to our six-hour holding cell to where our judge could bond them out. Um, to where then we don't have to drive to Moss Justice as much as what we are now. We're gonna be driving over there exponentially more from October until the time this, this facility is able to open. Um, so, yeah, while we, we wanna make sure we're dotting every I, crossing every T and making sure that we've got everything covered, there is a time is of the essence, um, to a certain extent, uh, because we're, we're gonna see a, a spike in, in cost, and then it's gonna come back down and level out as we're able to start using, um, our, our, the new facility. So we wanna be able to get into the facility as soon as possible. Uh, based on the construction calendar, again, uh, and this is factoring in a percentage of days of not being able to work through the winter before they get it dried in. They feel very comfortable if, with a normal fall for this area, if they're able to break ground in September, um, that they should be, uh, getting close to, uh, that dry-in, uh, standpoint, uh, as they move through the, um, you know, you start getting into the January, February, March where we typically see most of our inclement weather, to where they'll be able to work indoors and be able to hit that, that, um, that goal of, um, you know, late June, early July timeframe. So just wanted to kind of walk y'all through some other, you know, other avenues or, or extensions of the calendar that, that Tyler has presented. So any other questions on, on the calendar stuff?
I just was wondering, um, is it possible, based on this current timeline, to move first read up to our June meeting as opposed to July? I just didn't know based on the, um, yeah, the bank RFP if we have to delay it.
Uh, we're not gonna be able to get to Tyler the information.
Okay.
Any faster than that.
Okay.
Um, July is, is, I'm pushing the contractor hard. You know, I need a hundred percent of your focus, you know, kind of thing, to, to get us these numbers. Um, yeah, it's gonna take them that length of time. And again, we, we've already had our first meeting, working through the floor plan. Um, as soon as I can release them on the engineering stuff, they're gonna be, you know, burning it quick to get us, uh, to get us back the information we need so that I can supply Tyler with, with what he needs. Um, it takes forty-five, forty-five days generally, uh, to move through that, that, that bond process. So, um, I, yeah, one of the first things I asked Tyler was, can we do a special read, seven days after the first read? Go ahead and close. He needs the full thirty days to, to get us the best pricing, uh, through the RFP process with the bank.
I do have a couple of questions. It, they kind of jump around, and I was just jotting things down as we were chatting.
Tyler, do you have anything else from your presentation standpoint?
Nope, this is perfect.
Okay, so we're?
Okay, um, for the FFNE, um, and I don't, obviously, you're putting that together now, so we don't have a cost estimate to that. But is that something that we have to roll into the IR, IPRB? Or can we, since, do we have to finance depreciating assets such as a desk or an office chair over the course of fifteen years? Or is that a small enough?
Those, those are the things that are paid off early.
Okay.
You know, we're not, uh, financing office furniture. It is, while it is included in the bond cost.
Right.
It's not something, you, we're not, um, depreciating a desk or, you know, office chairs, things like that, over fifteen years. No, ma'am. Those, those are the first things that are basically ticked off, paid off, uh, as you go through the bond process.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, your only other option, I don't recommend this, uh, would be to dip into your fund balance to pay cash. You, Chief, we, as we discussed, we were just rough numbers right now. We were thinking we were between, what, six hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars in FFNE?
That's not bad.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I mean, your, your dispatch console and software is two hundred and fifty thousand of that, okay? Now, this is, this is equipment that's gonna last, you know, twenty years.
Right.
Yeah, software, uh, especially with the software package that Steve is, uh, Chief is looking at, same one that, that Rock Hill uses, adaptable, you're able to grow it, things like that. It's not, oh, well, it's technology. In five years, we need new software type thing, um, which is why he is, he has vetted that. Um, we will, in, one of the processes Chief is going through, uh, is finishing up now, is not every piece of furniture has to be brand new. There is good usable furniture in the existing station that will move over.
Are you sure? I've been there.
Yes. Well, Chief, Chief's got a good one, so that, that one still works, but no. So, I mean, yeah, we, we are gonna be very conservative on the FFNE without, um, going to the extent of over-complicating things for us as soon as we move into the new facility. I mean, where we can find, uh, room to save, we're absolutely. Um, yeah, we'll do that through the construction process as well, just as we did with the fire station, especially once we get to the interiors where we start value engineering to where, okay, I don't need to spend this much on flooring. I can spend this much on flooring. But wow, the bullet-resistant glass, yeah, that's pretty important. I don't wanna put just plexiglass in there, so maybe we're gonna spend a little bit more there, save a little bit here. Uh, that's, we did that with the fire station very, very successfully, uh, through that process. Would envision doing the exact same through this one. Yes, ma'am.
Um, one of the other questions I had was, as we look to how we're going to finance this, whether, I mean, ultimately, we have to come up with a lot of money somehow, but, um, the budget for next year, for example, with Moss Justice or with Fort Mill going away and with the fact that we're gonna have to transport to Moss Justice more, um, you're probably going to maybe need more on patrol or more officers. And so as we start to think through these things and long-term and other investment projects or other investment into people, um, that's something to keep in mind too, if we just raise mill, mileage and, you know, we're at the baseline and then we don't have, then we come back to the drawing table in July and we don't have money to hire another officer, but we, we are transporting them and that takes people off, off patrol. I don't know. Just, just trying to think ahead. So like, but what your needs are gonna be.
As you were looking, as you, on those lines, you had calculated a rough number of, of additional officers needed without, with, uh, having to transport, uh, to Moss Justice. Do you have that info with you?
I do.
Or know that?
So if, with the transition of having to leave the Fort Mill jail and, and traveling to the Moss Justice Center, that's, you're going, basically, I broke it down into hours, into mileage, into vehicle usage. And, uh, if going to the Moss Justice Center, uh, is gonna be roughly, if we had to add four more officers, you're looking at, uh, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, including two more cars. Uh, so, so that goes, it actually goes up to four hundred and thirty-three thousand. With the new building, there's gonna be some struggles for a ten-month period, obviously, of not having a, a jail. Uh, but there, I do believe that as we move forward, uh, we will end up needing to add, but I don't know if it's gonna be immediately.
Sure.
Uh, we're looking at the year or two, but we're definitely gonna need some funds to staff up 'cause we, we needs, we have some staffing issues now that we haven't been able to add for the last two or three years based on no place to put anybody. So there is that as well, uh, that I wanna make sure that council's aware of.
Yeah.
Chief, just to be clear, um, without the new station, you're looking at four officers, equipment, everything else, and all in the north of four hundred thousand dollars?
If we do not get the station, I need four immediately, and that's a minimum of four hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Okay. But, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, just to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. With the new station coming on, you know, let's say it's coming online in June, okay, into June. You think with, you could reduce that number? Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna, you know, make things a little bit, you know, I don't wanna say chaotic, you know, but y- you think you could work through it with much less for the, for, as long as it was for that shorter period of time? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what, all right.
Uh, just a quick question for you, Chief. What do you do from October to June? I mean, when you, I'm, I mean, how, how was, I mean, you, you gotta transport all these people, I mean?
Don't arrest anybody.
So we take them to the state line? No, I'm just kidding.
Just south of the river, let them out, turn around, come back.
Uh, we struggle. Uh, there's definitely gonna be some operational issues. I've been trying to, uh, beg, borrow and steal, uh, from Fort Mill. I've been trying to work with York County on establishing video bond hearing so that I can, uh, serve the citizens the most efficiently and the least amount of cost to them. So I'm working through all those plans, uh, but we're definitely gonna have a struggle from October to June. Uh, but we will manage. We'll make it happen and we'll do what we need to do. But there are some, some resources. We, we possibly need, uh, at least one person for transport or something. Because if we end up arresting two people, that's eight hours. That, it's three to four hours per person that we're arresting going to the Moss Justice. For travel time, booking time, and if they're a DUI, you add an additional hour on that, and then you add on adding the evidence and everything else. It's a long time of no public service out on the streets.
Chief, is, um, is that a, a service that we can contract out in terms of the transport? Versus having an officer that's sworn and?
We've, uh, we've been in discussions. Yeah, that's- Yeah, that's a great idea.
Wow, that's really Uber.
We've been in discussions with York County Sheriff's Office. Our discussions have evolved around anywhere from an east side justice system, which I believe should happen a hundred percent. I want to make sure that gets out there. But we've also discussed transport vans, but the issue with the transport vans, because we're not as populated of an area, you end up, it, it, it is not efficient for York County Sheriff's Office, which would be the ones we would have to contract with, and they don't seem to have an interest in that.
There's, you can't utilize like a private company, like a Allied Barton or a.
Absolutely not. The, because the ultimate safety and security lies on my shoulders and they're not accredited in some of the things they do and some of the things that we would have to have our rules and regulations on booking and York County wouldn't accept them from another agency.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
On this?
How much money do we currently have in reserves?
About three point five million.
And how much is that is kind of cornered, do we have to keep for?
The twenty-five percent limit?
But is there, there's nothing that is secured against that money? So, we have, we're, we have three point five million minus twenty-five percent is what we really have, so.
And then again, of course, we need, we need the money in the bank for the credit rating. The more reduced that, and then the credit rating cuts.
That's right.
That's why we got the best credit rating we can have by the size of us.
That's right.
In the state.
Right, I get that. I was just curious how much swag we had to.
Who says we'll take some money out of the reserves?
No, no, I didn't say take it.
He crunches.
How much do we have in the reserve? And I always thought it was strange if you, if you wanted to borrow three and a half million, you had to deposit three and a half million dollars in the bank to borrow the three hundred and fifty million, three hundred, that was already your money, you know, type thing. Anyway, that's a good thing we don't have to do that with cars and houses and things. And of course, we get a great interest rate because they already have our money that we're making payments on. So, I think we all agree, we have to have a police department. Is there anybody who doesn't think we need a police department? Okay, so we're, we're past that step. And then we have to figure we need about three point six, three point seven, three point eight million.
I would say that's correct.
Right, and we don't have that.
To build just the police?
No.
To build and the.
And the, and do the operations.
Operations.
Operations utilities, you're going to be.
This is capital and operating, okay.
No, 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 police, police and operation center. The public works utilities.
Is, needs a little bit of work. Yeah, the gray area behind that picture there. While they're already in there working, they might as well get that fixed up too, I guess. There are, you've already got the construction people in there, saves money in the long run to go ahead and have them fixing that up at the same time. That's how we came up with that.
Your, your police station costs, right now, we're figuring at approximately three point four to three point five just on new police station. If we don't do anything with public works and utilities, you're going to be in that ballpark. We're estimating at this point in time, an additional one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars going into the existing police station to make some, to make some repairs, make some modifications so that it could be utilized by our public works and utility staff. So, that's where we're, again, these are, these are ranges at this point, but we, we are working towards getting those drilled down. I feel very comfortable in saying, unless there is something horribly wrong that is determined when we're doing the soil testing for the existing police station, you should not, we should not exceed three point eight million dollars all in on all of that. I, I fully believe we will be under that.
That, Charlie, the, the existing building now, I, I mean, when I toured it, all I remember was, you know, mold, foundation, sliding down the hill, this, that and the other. Has that building been looked at by the contractor that you're recommending? And, or is this just a, a guesstimate of what can be done to salvage that building? Because the way it was put to me was it might not be salvageable.
The mold issue was remedied a number of years ago. We, we have already addressed that, that issue. The foundation issue, we're not sure, okay? That, that was, that is currently being looked at. Yeah, it could be that, oh, yeah, you, you know, you spend fifty grand, foundation's good to go, okay? I don't believe that the building itself is a complete loss at this point. The building itself absolutely does not function as a police station, doesn't have the room to at all. I think, I think with, with some, with a minor investment into the building, yeah, there's a potential we could get another fifteen, twenty years out of that facility with, with some minor investment in it, in it now. Yeah, if we're not going to move anybody into it and council is not inclined to invest a little money in it, I would make the recommendation that we spend the hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars and just demolish the building. Because without people in there going in and out of it on a daily basis and things like that, it's just, it's going to become a, an eyesore and eventually it's going to become a, a dilapidated building. So, if we can, if we can invest a little money into it, you know, get another twenty years out of that, you know, useful years out of that facility, my, my recommendation would be that we do that. But again, if that's not the direction that council wants to go, then we'll, we'll begin formulating additional plans, ideas and things of that nature to, to try to accommodate those services.
No, I'm, I'm just asking, has the building been looked at and is it salvageable?
It is currently, it is currently being looked at from a, from a structural standpoint. I can tell you that the, the mold issue from, from a few years ago, that was remediated and taken care of.
To, on that point, a little bit more. If the building is not salvageable, which I'm in the same boat as you, I don't understand. If it's not in that great of condition with the foundation, the mold, I understand the mold's taken care of, but it's, it's not a nice building, it's super old. I don't know what maintenance cost per year are going to be, even if we keep it open for the maintenance staff. But what if, have we, have we considered options in terms of what we are currently planning with the police station and also accommodating the maintenance onto that building as well? And, and whatever their needs are in terms of the facility? So, if, if they need office space, if they need storage space, could we, could we expand the current police station so that, or, you know, if it's a separate building over there?
They, they absolutely need to be completely separate buildings, no, no doubt about that. Have, have we looked at, yes, we, we have looked at it. I mean, there, there is, you know, we, we need indoor storage, you know, more storage than office space from a utility perspective for T-Cut. So, it's either utilize, be able to utilize this facility or construct a new facility down by Treatment Plant Four off of Timber Lake Drive there alongside of Number Two of the Pines. Not the best scenario over there. It's very hard access in and out and things of that nature, very limited on room and space. This is a much more ideal situation for them. From the, it's really more of a, you know, some office space, but primarily, it's, you're not going to have people in there all day long. It's a, it's a landing spot for your supervisors, organizing work orders, responding to emails, you know, things of that nature. You're really going to have more storage in there than you will anything in that facility. So, the HVAC system in there relatively new, in really good working order. The roof was put on brand new when we acquired the building back in two thousand and seven. It's metal roof, still in good shape. Yeah, does it need new carpet? Sure. But does it need new carpet with just having maintenance guys in and out of there? Probably not, yeah, that type thing. So, I mean, it, it's not a building I would want to move administrative staff into without spending significant amounts of money. And at that point, I don't know that it makes sense. But from a, a operations maintenance facility, I, I, yeah, I, I think your ROI on that is, is absolutely right where it needs to be. Now, we do still have the chipping, the wood chipping site off of Gardendale Road where there is room for a, a storage building over there to make it more efficient, you know, from an equipment storage standpoint to service the east side of town versus having a trailer or a drive, you know, larger equipment back and forth, up and down Heber Graham Way. That is being looked at as part of the impact fee study, that facility over there. And it would, it would be multi-functional, public works, antique, as far as equipment and things of that nature, just from an operational efficiency standpoint. But, yeah, i- if we don't do this here, then I think we need to take a very long look at the current maintenance facility and significantly expanding that. It's spending a lot more money down in that area. I think this gets us the most bang for our buck in going this route. Again, I, I do couch that with providing that the, the structural integrity of the building is, is where it needs to be. And that, again, that is being reviewed at this point in time.
I'm certainly, I'm, I'm frugal in that the building can be saved and can be used. I would want to use it rather than have to, to construct something new somewhere else. Dealing with foundation issues, and I'm asking a question because I have no idea, but I'm looking at the property line, the new building, the old building, and then the retention bond, which it looks pretty close to the other buildings. I mean, is that going to have any impact on the integrity of that building with the problems that it already has?
Based on the conversations we've had with, with Campco Engineering, who is the civil engineer selected by Randolph, the spacing that they put in this place was to keep it far enough away from the existing building so that it did not compromise its structural integrity. Now, they did couch that the same as I did with you guys. Not really sure what the structural integrity is of it right now, but with their plans, it doesn't impact that because obviously our current police officers are, it, it has to remain our current police station until they have completed construction of the new one. So, you've got, what was it, Chief? About thirty to forty foot of separation between the back wall of the new station and the front wall of the existing station, which according to the, the civil engineer was, was more than enough room to where.
I thought it was thirty.
Was it thirty? Okay. But that was a question we had is, hey, you're driving motor graders through there and you're doing all the grading and the pouring the concrete and tamping and things like that, are you shaking my building on down the hill while our current police station's in there? And again, that was, no, we've, we've moved it far enough away to where it, it shouldn't, it won't further impact the structural integrity as it exists today.
Okay, so back to the funding part. If we borrow three million dollars, how much money are we going to have to take out of reserves? Sorry about that. If we have to, if we only borrow three million? We're going to need about eight hundred thousand out of reserves? And what's that going to do, and what's that going to do to our ratings and?
That's unknown, well, that's unknown.
That causes our interest rates to go up?
Possibly.
We don't know, is the answer, but, but it wouldn't help, wouldn't help.
Obviously. Good way to go on a limb on that one. But it would be perhaps cheaper in the long run.
You would save interest because you wouldn't borrow as much.
On the other side, if we borrowed the four million dollars, we wouldn't need to touch our reserves. We'd maintain a great rating and we'd possibly have two hundred thousand dollars in three, four, five months to give back to this bond service. We wouldn't keep that money for fifteen years.
Correct.
So, feeling that, are you guys leaning towards a three million or a four million dollar?
And I'll just add one thing quickly. If you borrow the money now, we're going to structure so that your redemption provisions are very flexible. And so, if in a couple of years you wanted to pay down five hundred thousand dollars, you would have the flexibility. So, borrowing the full amount.
This is kind of a three or four step process I'm taking here. I'm just trying to get, get there, so we.
And Mayor, keep in.
All agree here that what we're looking at.
Keep in mind, you're, you're, if you do the, the bare minimum, three million dollars, could you, could you get a police station for three million dollars?
Plus.
Yes, but then you would have to really cut back significantly on what you're putting in the police station. You're probably, right off the jump, you're probably eliminating dispatch and bringing in.
We're talking about doing everything we need to do for the police station.
Okay.
But just taking money out of reserves to get it. That's really what we're talking about, I think.
I like to predict, you never know what's coming down the road.
Exactly. So, I'm just trying to see, we really don't have options, is what I'm trying to say.
So, this is, oh, sorry.
So, I'm just, we're talking a lot about a lot of stuff that really is just white noise. Because we're going to do it, so let's just do it. That's what I'm trying to say, you know, we're talking about, what if we borrowed two and a half million dollars? Well, we're not going to borrow two and a half million, so let's don't even discuss that. So, we're probably going to, we're probably going to borrow the four million dollars. Is everybody nodding their head on that? Does it make the most sense? Okay, so let's blow off the three million and not waste any more time on that. How are we going to pay for the four million dollars? Is the next step of this four-step process. So, raise taxes, doesn't sound very appealing. The, have the community pay for its own trash. Technically, it's, it's the same thing, it's a tax increase without being a tax increase. I mean, you call it a fee or a, but anything coming out of my back pocket is a tax, a fee, an allotment, whatever you want to call it. It's money coming out of a pocket, so. But when you do a, a millage increase, that never goes away. You know what I mean? That, that's there forever. I have never heard of anybody decreasing taxes. Whereas if we did a, had, had the constituencies pay for their, two-thirds of their trash, that doesn't have to be forever. We could say, we, yeah, we say, you know, we're probably going to do this for five years until we get this thing where it's enough to pay for it, where growth starts paying for itself. What? I never heard that. What a concept. So, that's what I'm trying, we're, we're kind of at step three now. How are we going to pay for the four million dollar police station that we are required to buy? That we're going to buy? Build, buy?
So, what I'm really interested in taking a look at is what the impact is to the taxpayer. So, this is something I mentioned to the city manager earlier today that I haven't seen in the documentation. So, what does, what does it look like to?
On that four million dollar scenario?
Let me go to the scenario too. So, what does it look like to the taxpayer to have a three point four seven millage rate increase? What does it look like for your average TDK resident?
Is anybody here going to raise taxes?
I think, I think that it's, yeah, I, I think it's important.
This is what I'm saying, we're talking about stuff we're not going to do.
I think that might end up being a, a, a cheaper approach for a taxpayer. So, I think that, I think that we just need to take a look at that to say, how is it going to impact you?
I've got the number.
That'd be great, I'd love to have it.
I mean, I realize, in the, in the documentation Tyler gave you, it says three point four seven. Well, when we do millage increases, it's whole mills. So, realistically, you're talking about a four mil increase, okay? You're, you're looking on a, on a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home, okay? Which is your medium home by, median home value in TDK. You're looking at an increase of about fifty-two dollars per year, okay? That covers only the construction debt service on the, that bond debt, okay? That's, if, doing the four mills, that's what that pays for. It doesn't, it, you're not getting any operational gains or anything else out of that. So, fifty-two dollars per year on a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home is, is your tax impact. Yeah, that's, that's what you would be looking at.
Versus a hundred and twenty dollars.
Versus a hundred and twenty dollars a year, correct, if you were to do ten dollars per house per month. Keep in mind that.
But we're talking about apples and oranges here too. The millage rate only covers, it would, whereas the ten dollars, we didn't have, we don't have to do ten dollars, we can do five dollars or seven dollars.
Exactly, if you do it, it's the same. I mean, if it's fifty-two dollars a year or sixty bucks a year, if you do five dollars, it just covers. I mean, you're looking to build some reserves too.
Well, it's different because if your, if your house, if your home value is only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, then it's going to be a different for you versus your home being half a million dollars. So, someone with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is going to pay less if there's a millage rate versus a user fee.
Right, everybody would pay the same if it's a user fee. One thing I would like to point out is council's aware, we have not increased the millage rate in nine years. We have been able to add staff, things of that nature because our tax base has grown. You have more people putting into, into the pot. Had we, had there been zero growth, okay, and we were maintaining Lake Ridge, Stonecrest and, and the peninsula, okay? We would have to be looking at tax increases through those nine years, you know, but because of fees coming in. And, and again, I, I'm not trying to sit here and say, oh, well, we've always had growth pay for growth. There are still things that we need, that we probably needed years and years ago that we have been able to manage and get by without. But those days are going to start coming numbered. Yeah, I realize that charging for trash and recent, for, for the, the trash fee is not going to be popular to everyone in the city.
As, as millage increases will be popular.
I think there. Um, I think there, but I, I also know through some conversation I've had with folks that there's a lot of people that think that's already on their utility bill and weren't aware they weren't paying for it based on conversations that I've had.
One other question, not to interrupt you, but something we hadn't discussed was as far as for the impact of, impact fees. Assuming that comes to fruition in the next few months, that's additional dollars.
That's additional dollars that offsets this. Absolutely. So if you're, if you're, if you were, if you were to start at the, at that ten dollar rate, okay, and then as those impact fees are, are being realized, absolutely, you could, you could back off of that. I mean, this would be a fee that would be reviewed as all our fees are every fiscal year. So I don't know that you, you necessarily have to commit that, well, we only wanna do this for five years and then we can get rid of it. Realistically, I think it's something that, that's evaluated every single year during the budget process, you know, and if, as, as other needs come online, well, you've got that money, that ten dollars, you know, per house per month coming in, that funds are there. Hey, you know what? We don't, you know, we, we've checked every box. And we've, we've hit every goal.
Through lots of municipalities, correct? I mean, we're not-
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask you. So, um, I'm kind of a data girl and I like to have my numbers and I like to understand it, big picture. And so I had asked Charlie when we started to throw these numbers around and where we were gonna get it from, what do other municipalities in South Carolina do? How much do they charge? What's the average for trash? Do they charge for trash? Do they charge for trash and recycle? Are we the minority? Are we the majority that we actually as a city pay for that? And so he's reached out to other municipalities. I don't know if you have a, I mean, I know you probably don't have the exact thing, but you can speak to it generally.
Your average around the, we, we are definitely in the minority. Um, I, I did hear from some cities that, of, um, little bit larger size or equal size to us, that, that currently don't charge, but will be charging in their coming fiscal year. Um, we are definitely in the minority on that. Your average, um, uh, rate, I guess is the right, is the right word there, uh, for around the state is just north of fourteen dollars per house per month. The average in York County amongst your, your main municipalities, us, Rock Hill, Fort Mill, TUK, um, uh, York and Clover, uh, your average is a little over fifteen dollars, uh, per house per month. The low end, uh, in York County is City of York and they're nine dollars and ninety cents, I believe, per house per month. Um, Clover is, I'm wanting to see, if I recall correctly, about fourteen dollars. Rock Hill and Fort Mill, you're, you're looking at eighteen, nineteen dollars, uh, per house per month. Yes, ma'am.
And based on those, so the municipalities, not only throughout the, the state, but in York County, the ones that are closest in proximity to us, we're the only ones that currently do not charge for trash and recycle.
Counsel, thank you. Counsel, I do want, um, just, um, sharing information. We did even, uh, we did look at, um, uh, the new water tower, um, that has to be built. Uh, the expense on that is one point two million. Um, had looked at that as part of this financing, obviously be funded through revenues from, from TCUD. Because we're, um, in, in the, in the midst of the impact fee study, um, and because of the strain that it would put on current utility revenues, we pulled that out. That's why you don't see it in this presentation. It, it made us uncomfortable on our debt service coverage that we're required to have. We were still above it, but not by much with adding that new debt to it. Uh, obviously, we don't want to increase our, our utility rates to fund a water tower that is, while yeah, will, um, help or enhance the existing system, it's primarily needed for the new. Uh, this is something that will most certainly be funded should council, um, adopt the impact fees. But because of the strain that it put on current, on, on our TCUD debt service coverage, that's why we pulled that out. We were just thinking from a standpoint of, you know, the cost of issuance and things like that, trying to save some money, like, you know, trying to bundle it together. Uh, just does not make a whole lot of, of sense right now in regards to the, the TCUD budget. So that's why we pulled that, that component out.
Well, that information is actually conflicting to the information that was provided at the planning commission meeting on Monday, uh, where they, the water tower did come up when we were looking at Wind Haven and they said that the water tower would have been needed whether or not that development came, and they said that there was a grant to pay for it. So is that not accurate?
It's, that's not a hundred percent accurate. Okay, there, there is a grant that we got for five hundred thousand. Okay, this is a one point s- one point seven million dollar tank. The borrow that we would have to do is one point two million, you know, you know, less the grant funds. If we didn't have game on, Wind Haven, River Falls, because we have the booster pumps in place, we have enough elevated storage and with the booster pumps, we have the, we are able to supply the adequate pressures that we need for what is here right now today. As Cameron Creek continues to build out, it, it, yeah, it's gonna put strain on that system. Game on will put strain on those pressures. Wind Haven a hundred percent will, River Falls a hundred percent will. So yeah, w- w- we will absolutely need tho- those, uh, that, that new tank because of everything that is already approved. We don't need the tank for things that have not been approved yet. No. I mean, this is for, to, to get to build out, yeah, we have to have that water tank, most certainly. We did not get a grant to fund the entire thing. Boy, I wish we had. No, it, it covered five hundred thousand dollars is, is what that was through the Rural Infrastructure Authority. Yes, ma'am.
Now, don't you think there's some scenario that may develop with CalAtlantic, the builders for Wind Haven? I, I know that ever, there's always concessions and hey, we'll do this. If you could do that, do you foresee any possibilities with, you know, some of these developers that, hey, if, if we concede this, we could give you X amount for the water tower or we'll complete the wa- like, so, some type of pressure we could put on the builders to say, hey, this burden isn't all on us, buddy, cause you're coming in with all these homes.
Well, y- y- yeah, they're, they're gonna be, every, all one hundred and eighty-five of those, those homes that, um, CalAtlantic was actually bought out by Lennar. Um, so Lennar is, is who we're dealing with there. Um, all hundred, all one hundred and eighty-five, one hundred and eighty-eight, um, of those homes are paying, would be paying the impact fee. The commercial businesses that would go into the seven acres of commercial property are gonna be paying impact fees. Because of the way the state law reads, um, they have to pay their proportionate share. Police station, yeah, it's not, there's not gonna be a whole lot of impact fees that go to police station, but there will be some. Catawba Park, it won't be the whole thing, but yeah, there, there's definitely gonna be some. The water tower is one thing where, yeah, a lot of that expense, um, it would most certainly get gobbled up on, under those impact fees to where you're looking at, at very, maybe not even any expense truly coming from your existing, uh, tax base as, as it sits here today. But, um, again, we're, we are most certainly looking forward to getting that information from the, from the consultant, um, which should be, um, middle to late next month, uh, as we start going through that, those numbers. That's, yeah, again, not having that info right now, but let's, let's pull the water tower back, uh, for right now. Let's, let's finish the impact fee study and then take another look at this thing, so.
Will the impact fees be permit driven or CO driven?
Permit. At, at, at the time that they pull the building permit. Um, so when they pay their, 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 they come into city hall and pay the permit fees. Um, first thing they've gotta do is show us that they've gone over to York County and paid the school impact fee. And then they would pay their, their permit, um, all of those, uh, business license, all those fees along with that impact fee. Yes.
What's the, um, what does it take to raise a fee on the, uh, utility statement? Just a reading by counsel?
To, you're talking about increasing a fee?
Oh, to add this to-
Three dollars to the utility fee. Um, you would, just a budget amendment.
Right.
Uh, it's not a new fee. It would just be a budget amendment.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And then to take it away is the same.
Correct.
What does it take to raise taxes?
Public hearing.
And then to reduce taxes?
Public hearing.
And how much time?
Second read.
And how much energy?
Two, two and a half months.
So a swipe of the pen versus two and a half months? Swipe of the pen to raise two, three, five, seven, ten dollars on the utility fee? Versus, I mean, the, uh, offset of the trash? Versus raising three and a half mills? We're talking about a swipe of the pen to put five dollars on a statement of utility?
Well, you would have to vote on, you would have to go through first and second read of an ordinance to add that fee. It wouldn't just be a, raise your hand because that's-
Seven days.
Seven days in between reads, yes, sir.
To do a raising of taxes, raising the mills.
With, with that, you've got your, your public hearing, your first read, second read, but again, you only need this-
Cost to the city in doing that with, uh,
No, sir.
Public notifications and ads in the paper and all that kinda stuff?
Oh, yes. You, you've got, you've gotta do your normal, uh, you gotta advertise the public hearing and things of that nature. Yes, sir. Um, and we wouldn't envision doing, if, if council was on board with, with doing, um, collecting whatever the fee is for, for the trash, we would envision that as doing, doing that as part of the upcoming eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, you know, effective, I took one, not-
Difference between re- uh, offsetting the trash versus raising taxes? The difficulty in to put it on?
I would say the only, the only real difference is your advertisement, um, your public notification for the public hearing.
I mean, two and a half months to do it and-
Well, that's without any special reads. You could, you could do a tax increase with a public hearing, first read, seven days later do a second read if that's what council wanted to do. Um, you would still be in compliance with the law. With, with doing the fee, you could do that first read, second read. You've approved it. It's a budget amendment to add that fee and you're, and you're off and going. Um, again, either way, you're, you could do, on a fast track, you could do them both in a month, month and change, um, with, with a special meeting. Without a special meeting, you're two months either way because of the, the, the budget readings. Um, your, your biggest difference would be the two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollar ad, um, that the Herald charges us where we, we have to do the public advertisement in the paper, um, to comply with state law is your, is your real big difference. Increasing four mills, uh, that's about a two hundred thousand dollar value and change to the city, um, is what your, your total new revenues would be. Um, yeah, and again-
Time, say if we raise millage, can we, can we raise it again in five months? Or does we have to?
No, once a year.
Once a year. What if we change, if we just put something on the statement? We go from ten dollars down to five dollars. How many times of the year can we do that?
As many times as you vote to amend the ordinance.
Every month.
Do ten dollars for a couple of years and change it to five and to nothing?
Can you do it for five months and change it? Just trying to point out the difference between-
Much easier to change the fee than taxes, most certainly.
Much easier to change the fee than to do the taxes.
Sure. I think that's a fair statement.
But I also think it's a fair statement to say that we do the work and we do the analysis and we calculate the cost and the impact to everyone within the city and understand what that impact is fully. Sure, it might take more work to do the millage, but I mean, I didn't, I didn't agree to run for council because I didn't wanna do work. So I'm okay with taking the time to make sure that we're doing the analysis and we're taking a look at the numbers and understanding the impact that it's gonna have on the residents of TUK. And, and then with that information and with that data, using that to make the best decision on how to move forward.
We're not talking about, we're talking about two or three dollars a month.
Two to three dollars a month to, to you might not be a big deal.
Oh, please, don't give me that.
But it might be, but it might be a big deal to someone else. I'm just saying.
Intiga K.
Intiga K, absolutely.
I'll buy that.
One thing I do ask, um, or do wanna caution council on, just as, as a reminder, state law does, um, uh, govern how much we are allowed to increase taxes. Okay? You can't just choose a number. Um, you, any ta- any millage rate, any millage points that you don't charge, you can bank for, is it three years, five years? Five years. Um, your, your millage is based on, uh, the, um, CPI, um, your consumer price index and your percentage of population growth. Okay, so while right now, do I, do what I, off the back of the napkin, I would say, yes, we would be able to increase four mills without it, without a doubt. Um, I, yeah, more than four mills, uh, yeah, we, we would have to, we would have to definitely run some numbers. Um, tax dollars can offset operations. I mean, tax dollars are paying for operations now. Um, but, so just to make sure that I wa- I was clear before that, if, if we were to do the four mills, the only thing dollar wise that that's really doing is capturing that new debt. I'm not saying that it, and I guess, do we talk about, you could do, um, debt millage. Um, I know Rock Hill does debt millage.
You, you could levy debt service millage, but if you pay off general obligation bonds, if that debt goes away, then debt service millage automatically goes away with it. And so if you were gonna raise four mills, if you do it on the operating side, you get it forever. Uh, but if you do it for debt service millage, you have to have general obligation bond debt outstanding.
Right. So, um, yeah, again, I, my caution to council is we, we are going to continue to have increased cost, increased needs. Obviously, we, we have some folks in the audience here, um, that, that have identified, um, what, what they see as needs in their areas. Um, you know, the, 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 the ask, so to speak, is gonna continue, we get it every day. You know, more flower beds, better park maintenance, more potholes being patched and things of that nature. We, we've got to be able to continue to, to increase revenues. Um, we, we have identified this as a very logical, simple way of, of being able to do that. We're offsetting a portion of an expense that we're incurring on, on behalf of the residents in the, in the trash and recycle collection. Not saying that, that it's the only way by any imagination. Um, but it definitely allows council or affords council options, um, you know, to be able to. I have seen us over in, in the past as a city, this thing gets funded and it was at the bottom of the priority list, but it got funded because, well, we can afford that thing, we can't afford the things in front of it. Not really a phenomenal business practice, you know, and just, well, we'll, we'll, we'll pay for this thing even though it was at the very, it was at the year ten of the ten year plan, uh, but we had to skip things two through seven because, well, those things are a lot more expensive. Being able to bring in this type of revenue on an annual basis most certainly allows us to con- uh, to continue enhancing the city, enhancing service, existing services that we're providing now, um, and, and really take a long, hard look at additional services that, you know, as we go through the, uh, strategic, uh, planning workshop, you know, maybe there's additional services that, um, you know, that are coming to the surface that we're not even thinking about right now. It's a lot harder to be able to do those things, in my opinion, going through a, a millage increase. Yeah, somebo- yeah, again, yeah, there, there are people that are living, that, that do have a, you know, two hundred thousand dollar house in TUK. Yeah, and there are people that have two and a half million dollar homes in TUK. At ten dollars per person, per, or per house per month, everybody's paying the, the, the same amount. Again, we, we use a scenario of a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar house because that is the median home value. Um, you've probably got a good chunk of homes that are, I know you've got a good chunk of homes that are well above that value. So their impact probably getting closer to that, that hundred dollar a year range versus the fifty-two. And then some are gonna be less than the fifty-two, most certainly.
Well, and I think perspective's a lot of it. Um, you know, right now, we're the only city in York County where the municipality pays one hundred percent of that fee. If we go in this direction, we'll be the only city in York County that pays thirty-three percent or fifty percent of that utility fee. So it's, you know, the perception for me is, are people, I think spoiled, you know, this, do, do residents have the expectation of the city to pay for trash and recycling? It's the norm. It's what we've been doing. If we look at it with glass half full, it's, hey, the city, the city is still taking care of the citizens to make it and maintain the safest city in South Carolina. And so it's, you know, from a positive perspective, not necessarily a negative perspective. Can everybody afford it or how much it's gonna impact? We're still doing right by the citizens regardless, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think to both of your points, I think you both make valid points, but, um, asking our residents to pay more money is never gonna be a popular option. And that's what we're, exactly what we're going to have to ask them to do one way or the other. Um, and so, like you said, I think, you know, we don't, aren't voting on this until July and we don't have to make a decision till then. This is just a, an opportunity for us to get all of our questions answered and all of the information out there. But yes, it, it's a tough decision. I know it is for me and something that I'll think about from now until that day. Um, but, you know, it, it's not gonna be popular either way, so.
So what was the, how much did Rock Hill pay for trash service per house?
They're at nineteen, I believe.
So a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house pays nineteen?
That's correct.
What is a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar?
It's, it's nineteen.
Oh, so it pays nineteen also?
Different makeup of the community as well.
And we're talking about a reduction of trash, trash fees, right? See, it doesn't matter. That's, we're talking about the trash. A two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house pays the same as a seven- A two hundred fifty thousand dollar house pays the same as a seven hundred fifty, it's trash.
I'm not disagreeing.
You are, you disagree.
I just say that.
Trash from a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house ought to be cheaper than a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar.
I want to do the analysis and ask the questions and so I understand what the impact is. That was my point. It wasn't to say no or I disagree with that. It's just, I want to really understand what it is we're making a decision on and how it impacts the diversity we have within our city.
Heather, just to touch on something you just said, y'all don't have to make this decision on whether it's trash or taxes. If it's taxes, yeah, we're going to have to make that decision in that July timeframe. Technically, if it's trash, you're into August because it's part of the budget. And that's, you know, we're looking budget workshop probably first week of August timeframe. Yeah, so I mean.
We're not voting tonight, I guess.
You're definitely not voting tonight by any stretch. Staff is not asking that, hey, starting June one, can we start charging for trash and recycle? And I.
Can we?
Carry the one.
No, the point is.
It's as easy as a vote.
The point is we have to pay for the fire station or the police station. The current funds we have doesn't cut it, so we have to find other resources to do it.
That's correct.
Or don't build a police station. Is anybody here not going to build a police station? Right. So we either raise taxes or do the trash. I don't know how that's very hard to think about.
If I can.
Yeah, we're not arguing. I think it's just, we'll all vote. We all get an equal vote and we'll make the decision when it comes to it.
I think we're just, like I said, we're arguing about stuff that we're not going to do or, you know, it's just, it's just taken, we're over analyzing a very obvious thing to me for the last hour.
For clarification for us on, if I can steer to a little bit different direction. One of the other topics that I brought up, boat storage. How does, without taking a vote, obviously. Heading the right path? Council comfortable with heading down that path? I mean, we're not, if we were to get out of the boat storage business, it would be to notify everybody in the next few weeks, but they've got until, you know, like January, you know, after the boating season and things like that, that we would be shutting it down. Not, hey, July fourth, boat, get out, that type of thing. Before I continue down that path, I just want to, I don't want to make, I want to make sure that I'm not wasting efforts, wasting time. Is council comfortable with that direction?
Remind us again what the options are if we keep the boat storage. What's that cause and effect on the police station?
If you keep the, it definitely adds some security expense with the visitor parking lot over there. It most certainly means public works stays where it is. They need to be able to utilize that area to move them away.
If we kept the boat storage, we would have to build a public works site somewhere else.
Or, yes, or spend a good chunk of money in expanding where it is right now by the lower tennis courts, no doubt about it.
Okay.
And I'm sure the tennis court people are going to talk to us about that in a minute, about expanding in the parking lot. And you've got about seventy thousand dollars minimum, I would think, that we're going to have to start putting into the boat storage. Or you're basically, the tenants there will make the decision for us. They're just going to pull out.
Thirty five thousand per year?
About thirty to thirty five thousand, yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Just a point for timing wise, if we do break ground in September, there is going to be some issues in transporting the boats and trailers in and out as they do some clearing.
So that's going to be an issue that we're going to have to deal with.
And there is an abundance of storage facilities in the area. Would everybody agree to that?
Do you plan on just using the boat storage? Will that just be parking or are you talking about a building there?
No, we can't build because of the transmission lines. So you would, on the lower half, close to the privacy fence on the back, we would envision that as material storage, you know, riprap, rock, pipes, things like that on the upper lot, upper end of that lot. Fleet vehicle parking, yes. Next thing, obviously, council, y'all are aware, we've got some folks with us here tonight. I've had a series of meetings with these folks, both individually and collectively. We've got representatives from the TK Tennis Association, the TK Croquet Club, as well as some folks who are very active in pickleball, which I've come to learn is one of the fastest growing sports in the U S. Did not realize that, but. Walt's just here. Counsel, as they approached me with their request, what they feel is needs for their various activities. The thought that I had was if we're going to go and borrow, let's try to do it once, as I kind of referred to with the water tower project, you know, let's do one big borrow versus lots of small borrows, that kind of thing. They've been great to deal with, you know, providing lots of information, which y'all have in your packets here this evening with numbers to look at, you know, even some renderings from tennis and from croquet, things of that nature. My concern right now, one is I don't think we can do the tennis complex as you see it in your packet tonight. As we started down that road, I thought we were, you know, we made an attempt to see if we could just completely one hundred percent relocate public works and eliminate their building or shift golf maintenance into that building and tear down the golf maintenance to give way to a tennis complex, that eight court complex that you've got in your packets. We can't do that. The police station, the current police station isn't big enough for us to completely remove and eliminate the public works. What it most certainly will let us do is get that public works area where the lower courts are now, basically everything's inside. There is nothing outside down there at that point, which is really what the big eyesore is. The piles of dirt, the dumpsters, the rocks, the pipes and things like that. So, yeah, at least in that particular area, a tennis complex is not going to fit. It's not going to work. I know several of us have had conversations on and off about, you know, at what level should the city be at tennis, considering the potential for these, a new, well, game on with what they're building and things like that. As we sit here tonight, it would be my recommendation to council, obviously, we've gathered a lot of information. Thank you to you folks that are here this evening for putting that information together. But with the strategic planning workshop coming up in just a few weeks, really, I mean, we're, what, I guess it's almost a month away now. With that coming up, with the impact fee study coming around and things like that, it would be my recommendation that we maintain what we have right now, continue to maintain that. We do have some repairs scheduled for all eight courts. I believe that's on the schedule for July for some of the crack issues that they have right now. I would rather see us spend more time, whether it's in small groups, you know, two council members and these folks so that we don't have a quorum of council, and continue to play this out over the next, you know, several months to make sure that when we do pull, or if council decides to pull a trigger, whatever trigger that may be, we're absolutely pulling the right one. I don't feel comfortable enough right now to make any other recommendation than to, let's put a pause on this. Let's focus on getting through the police station and the utility stuff, the operation center, I should say, and continue having these conversations with these fine folks through the fall, yeah, through the course of the rest of this year and going into next year as we start to move towards that nineteen twenty fiscal year. Yeah, I think is, we don't know at this point what kind of positive impact to our current expenses are that the impact fees will have, i.e. the debt service on our existing, on the new fire station. We've already been told by the consultant, some of that debt can be picked up by impact fees. I have no idea how much, you know, so that, you know, our financial picture, I think, over the next six, eight months is going to change for the better. Yeah, obviously, whatever decision council arrives at on the trash fee, you know, and what revenues that generates and things of that nature. So that would be my recommendation to council in regards to those facilities. Yeah, and I guess for the record, for the people that are playing along at home, are going to watch this later on our website, you've got a request from Croquet for a second court adjacent to the existing court. We did look at another option, potentially relocating them, but based on some of the, some of the issues that we have in regards to the tennis with the public works and things like that, I don't think that the option B is feasible. So you would be looking at a request for a second Croquet court. With tennis without the complex, I think some additional conversations need to happen with tennis. I know they were gracious enough, they did meet with the game on developer. Don't know that that's the right fit for what they want, based on how that meeting went. Doesn't mean that it can't get there. Really don't know. So outside of a tennis complex, you know, really what are we looking at from a tennis standpoint? Are we completely reconstructing courts? Are we reducing the total number of courts and just more or less just having, hey, here's some free courts, you know, first come, first served, kind of like the lower courts are now? Not saying that that's what I'm recommending. I'm just saying, you know, there's, I think there's, you know, we need to drill down on the tennis thing. And then obviously pickleball, and I think that's going to be predicated by what do we, what we end up doing with tennis because there's not really a lot of good usable area as it exists right now to construct brand new pickleball courts without some type of give and take with tennis, without looking at, you know, I know Game On is looking to do indoor pickleball courts. We potentially have some area at Catawba Park where we might could fit in some pickleball courts down there, you know, in some of the open space. I don't know that we've been able to put sixteen pickleball courts, but, you know, we've probably got enough room where we could get, you know, probably four to eight courts, you know, based on our current plans and things like that. So I really think there's a lot of additional conversations that we need to have. I don't feel comfortable in making a recommendation based on the information that we've provided with y'all with the different scenarios.
Let's talk about those scenarios real fast.
Sure.
Because obviously, we just went to how much money it's going to cost to build a police station and that's a need. We have to have a police station. So it looks like the proposed tennis complex would be about one point, one point one million dollars. Reconstruction, doing everything, right?
With parking, lighting, the whole.
The whole thing that we wanted to build down there. Obviously, we can't even figure out how to come up with the three and a half to four million dollars for the police station right now. And then now on top of that, we got to have another one point one million dollars. So it's timing, obviously. If we didn't have to build a police station, this might be something we can look at, but it's kind of not in this year's forecast, I don't think. And then the Croquet facility, about ninety thousand dollars. And then pickleball, you know, we have to figure out where that's going to go, about a hundred eighty thousand dollars for eight courts. And where, where do they, and where do they go? So that's kind of, that's the first phase of what we're looking at, the money involved with that. Knowing that Game On is coming, you know, three, four miles away and they're going to have tennis courts and they're going to have pickleball courts, they're not going to have croquet courts. So to spend one point two, one and a quarter million dollars for something that's coming across, you know, four miles away within the next two or three years, that's a big chunk to swallow there. But I'm not opposed to looking at it. I mean, we just got to figure out where the money's going to come from and try to find a way to make it cheaper. Anybody else got any comments on that? Have y'all been looking at this? So it's a very costly endeavor. When we first started talking about it, it didn't seem like it was anywhere near this. It was twenty percent of this and when numbers come in, it's reality. Yeah, you guys want to make some public comments real fast? Okay, let's go, let's start with Chuck Heron. He wants to talk about tennis. Did Chuck already leave? Oh, yeah, any other. Okay, you don't want to learn about tennis and golf? All right, so let's go with Trish. Pickleball.
Hello, I'm Trish. I am the USA PA, which is the National Organization for Pickleball. I am an ambassador for them. It's a volunteer position and I am the T K and Fort Mill ambassador. So my push is, of course, to get pickleball in this area. We've had a lot of difficulty trying to share courts with the tennis people. They don't like us too much and trying to play pickleball on the courts that we have is very difficult. It's a different sized net. It's a lot wider. We go in and we have to adjust the strap down so that we can actually get kind of close to where a pickleball net would be. The sides are much higher than actual size of a pickleball net. There's also the width of the pickleball is shorter. The net is very wide. Doesn't allow you to do certain shots that, I don't know how sure you don't care, but.
No, we get it. We understand that.
Okay. So and the size of the court also, you have to run after the balls constantly because it's way back from, you know, where you're actually playing. We have a group, there's several groups in our community that are currently playing. The group, Tim is here with me. His group alone, how many do you think you have? About forty five to fifty in his group alone. There's also another group that I worked with when I initially moved into the area, which was three years ago. That's another group that plays as well. I'm not sure offhand how many they have. There's people in our area that go outside of our community just to play. I for one am one of them. I travel upwards of thirty five, forty minutes away just to go and play.
Is there a fee when you go to play somewhere?
I do play, there's both. Some places is free. Other places, I go to Indian Trail and they charge, you can buy kind of rated down to three dollars. It's five to three dollars.
Have you spoke to the Game On people?
I did.
And is that acceptable, what they're going to build?
What they're building is fantastic. I did try to reach out to him after our meeting because we didn't get a whole lot of time to talk. But what the concern is, is that they can't break it down just to pickleball. So you would have to have a full membership to their club, which a lot of people aren't going to want to do. Over where I play at Indian Trail, it's just pickleball that you can just come in and get, you know, you can buy, I buy, it's called a flex pass. So I come in and pay there. You have people that come from all over to participate. Does that mean I'm timed up? It does mean that?
Yeah, but we can ask questions.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So do you know what the overall fee is? Did they break that down yet with the overall fee is in Game On?
Right now, the developer is working through his business model. Yes, he doesn't want to nickel and dime, so you join, you have access to everything at the facility. The pool, the fitness, the tennis, the pickleball, so on and so forth. He is working through different scenarios that, as he has said, whether it's, you know, a much reduced rate if you're a T K resident, maybe kids are free and parents are this much. Different scenarios because he most certainly wants to be, even though he, well, he wants to be a part of the city and a good partner of the city, not just a business in the city, if that makes sense. So, but he has not indicated to me at this point what his price point would be for that facility.
I was more like Ryan said earlier about, when they come to our area, you know, talk about what they give and take with and talk to Jerry about what the difference would be for us to bring eight pickleball courts and that's how many people can play on eight pickleball courts? That's forty, fifty people that aren't using Game On facility. You know what I mean? So maybe talk to them about making passes for pickleball or passes for tennis or passes. Not trying to tell them how to run his business, but.
Flex pass.
A flex pass, but versus, we're going to build, we're going to build our own stuff here and it's going to be in competition with. A flex pass, but versus, we're gonna build, we're gonna build our own stuff here and it's gonna be in competition with a business, another business in T K.
We discussed that, and he said it was difficult because of the layout of the, of the facility itself.
So, somebody could get in and go swimming or something, I see.
And the only thing he threw out at that time was, I had written down, single membership was a hundred and a family membership of two hundred, was that? Kind of, yeah.
Bob to stay and chief to stay, they don't need to listen to pickleball and tennis if you guys don't wanna stay, I mean, I know you got better things to do.
Thank you all.
Way to be team players, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Sticking with us.
She had a question about the-
When it's your time, she will get you, hang on, hang on.
Hers was for the police station.
Oh, police, okay.
Just kidding, you're not allowed to go.
Do you wanna ask it now and then they can leave?
Let's just go ahead, we'll go with it, just ask the question, it's fine. Come up to the microphone. Hang on, Trish.
You get a new three minutes when you come back.
I'll give you what's left.
He was kidding.
Okay, if we're talking four million dollars for the police station, could that possibly go down?
Yes.
And it also could possibly go up with the steel and all that.
I think four million is the tops.
We actually, we actually had conversations specifically about that, and what, what's, what everybody is telling us is you had an initial spike on the, on the steel because of the tariffs, things like that, those are starting to normalize. You had the freak out moment. Now starting, yeah, construction prices have gone up exponentially. We can't build this station that we're talking about for that, that three point five, three point seven range. We can't build it for that, for that price next year. Pricing, construction prices are continuing to rise. So, that, that building is going to continue to get more expensive. The pricing that we're working on right now, once we, once we give the green light, that is the price. Okay, so, is, is, yeah, even though it's gonna take them till June or July to finish, the price isn't going to continue to go up, it's, this is the price, this is the contract price, that's what they build it for. If their price, if the pricing for them goes up, they're eating that, cuz we will have a contract price.
And if we borrow at the four million dollar level and it's only three point three, we can give the money back. We don't have to keep- Yeah, we can.
Oh, you mean pay it off?
Pay, pay the money. So, really, instead of four million, it'll only be three point three million or whatever. Versus of getting a three million and dipping in three hundred thousand into the reserves, which makes Bob have heart failure.
My next question is, the EMS is located right there at the police station now. Has anything been done about what impact the construction would have on the traffic with the school traffic in the morning, the school traffic in the afternoon? It's already a mess, what's gonna happen with all of that? I'm for the police station all the way.
We are, we are continuing having conversations with Robert White and, and the folks with, with Piedmont EMS. Working to, I mean, we wanna keep them here, they want to be here. When the new police station is built, they will not be in the new police station. They will either be where they are right now, at the old police station that is now a maintenance facility. Or we will have them relocated out to Fire Station One, the new fire station. So, we are working through those scenarios. Obviously, we have told them that if they want to make modifications at Station One for their ambulance, they're paying for that. We are not gonna pay for that. I don't know that they really like that option, but it is definitely an option that they are looking at. Obviously, they would be able to remain where they are at no expense. Now, where they, will there be interruptions as far as access egress? Yes, but they'll be minimal and they will be scheduled, because that, that access egress also impacts patrol and things of that nature. So, that, that is part of, of the contractor's plan and understands that those delays have to be absolutely minimal. And they will be scheduled ahead of time to where the service vehicles can be located, to where they don't have to worry about that. That is all part of the construction plan, yes ma'am.
Getting out in the morning at two thirty in the afternoon, of course, summertime's not gonna matter, but right now, and the patrol getting in and out.
It's why you have the lights and the sirens.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, you're dismissed.
All right, thank you. Again.
Thank you guys.
Okay, so, we understand where we are in the pickleball courts, I guess, do you understand where we are in the pickleball courts?
Well, yeah. We're waiting.
Yeah, and we wish we had the money to do it.
Well, one thing to consider too, is if we are waiting for a certain amount of time, since there is such a conflict between the tennis players, I mean, we show up and we're, we're taking up all four courts. Just with the, the one group that we have, would be to consider relining even just one court, and you can make that into four pickleball courts. Maybe just put up some kinda partition in between. You know, that's our whole group in, just on one court, and it allows three extra courts for tennis. Consideration.
I think we kinda discussed that today, didn't we?
Trish, where is the closest, you said Indian Trail, is that the closest, is that the closest to our-
Well, that's Carolina, Carolina Orchards is for their community, that we can't play there. Bang Street, I did start a program over there, but it's indoor and it's not a very nice facility. I mean, everything's cracking from the ceiling.
So, if we took one court, that makes four courts?
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, on the, the current courts now, the lower courts, they're actually, it's actually smaller dimensions than what we thought, we thought it was one twenty by one, by one twenty. It's one twenty by one hundred. So, if, I'm not sure if we can get four courts down in that setup at all. Definitely can get two on there, but just with the width, because it's not what the standard setup was originally told it was.
I did try and suggest that when they were repainting things, cuz I knew the explosion that we were going through. And wasn't going for it at the time, but-
Well, we even talked about building some, just four pickleball courts over there in the, in one of those back areas, we have to take down some trees and all. But again, that's in the pricier side, and it's not undoable, but it's two hundred thousand or so and, you know.
I definitely think there, there are potential options in and around the existing lower courts that would accommodate pickleball. Just depending on which option is, is selected, obviously, they're, they're gonna come at varying degrees of price, most certainly.
Certainly, anything that you would consider would be a plus.
All right.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
All right.
Tim, did you have something separately? Okay. Okay, next would be Vic, you're up next. And Vic's gonna talk about tennis.
Charlie kinda took the wind out of my sails. I'm Vic Siegel, and I'm chairman of the TK Tennis Association Board. Just briefly, what the TK Tennis Association is, it's, it's a group of tennis players, of members of the club, and what we do is organize tennis events and socials and things, and we also work with the club as sort of the liaison to the players to tell them what things we need and so forth. Plus, we also frankly do a lot of the routine, small maintenance on the courts. I mean, we're the ones putting wind screens when they, the club pays for new tennis nets and we put them up and things like that. So, uh-
Where are you on the, going to game on and play, you're in the same boat, you don't know what the pricing is, so you don't have an opinion yet?
Well, he did give us an indication ballpark of what it was, and, and again, like Trish, my, my complaint is that they won't break it out. To be honest, if they would break out a tennis membership, I'm all in. I'm all in, and I don't think the city needs to be building a tennis center.
That's, that's the quandary we're in right now with the one point-
But I did, you know, I know-
One and a quarter million dollars, if game on's gonna build it anyway, why are we building it? And maintain it, and maintaining it and everything else.
But the problem is, if we have to join everything, it's so expensive. I mean, I did some quick polling, unofficial polling of tennis players of our group, and I could only find like three people who would join there if they have to join everything. And if I went the other way, I, you know, twelve or fifteen people I talked to, all but three said they would join there. And some people who no longer belong here because they wanted clay courts and they're playing elsewhere, said they'd come back.
Because game on's into the clay courts also?
Cuz they're gonna have five clay courts, as well as four indoor courts. So, that's a huge draw.
Sure.
Yeah, if you can get clay courts, you can really bring people. And in fact, if we were building a tennis center, I would say we should reconsider clay courts, cuz there's no public clay courts around. You could draw people from all over if you had clay courts.
Any questions?
So, what's a backup plan? So, like, let's say, cuz I, I just don't think one point one million dollars is feasible right now. What would you say is something that is, is a little bit more workable? I mean, based on what we have currently, what would, what would your suggestion be if we can't build a brand new facility? And, and we have to work within, yeah.
Kick out the pickleballers?
By the way, I don't dislike pickleball. I just don't like them playing pickleball in our tennis courts. Yeah, I think the only option we have is to repair the courts properly and resurface the courts and continue with what we have. The problem with it being is that we have the four courts down below, four courts up above. We don't have enough courts, club courts for the club to really grow the club. We don't have enough membership, and the problem is that we've lost too many people, said, what the hell, I just play down below and I don't have to pay anything, and I can call Charlie up and complain about it all the time. So, that's the issue, if we had eight courts together, we could really grow, and we could have a lot more team sports, et cetera. I mean, like, right now, the courts are split and they're in such poor condition that, like, the inter club team, the women's inter club team that's been playing here for like thirty years, they're joining TK, paying the membership, and they're playing out of Rock Hill, because our courts are so bad. So, they're paying a hundred and fifty bucks a year and not even playing here, they're playing in Rock Hill and paying again down there, just so they can still be an inter club. Because we don't have the courts.
And I will say, based on some, some recent evaluations that we've, we've gone through with actually Court One, the upper courts are much easier repairable, and that, again, as I said, that, that project is, is already scheduled for July. The lower courts, you had significant drainage issues for so many years. The repair, any repairs we do to those are gonna be short, short-term repairs. I mean, they're gonna last a year, two years, you know, that type thing. You're gonna continue to get those cracks back because it has subsurface issues. If we, the permanent fix on, on the lower courts, if, if those are gonna stay, stay with us, is gonna be a, a full reconstruction of the four lower courts. Otherwise, you're gonna have that ongoing, you know, annual, bi-annual, large expense. One expense that if we are keeping those courts, that we definitely need to entertain for the upcoming fiscal year, not to get into a budget workshop conversation, is the lights on the lower courts have to be replaced. They are, they have hit end of useful life and strong, strong, strong breezes make those things sway at an uncomfortable amount. We, we need to, to get those gone, the, the lighting. But again, can we, we are doing some significant crack fill with the Court One guys in July on all eight courts, and then looking to do a resurface. I will be interested to see how long that clock, the, the crack repair lasts on the lower courts. Based on the, the condition of the upper courts, I think, I think there's potential that, that lasts for a significant amount of time. The lower courts, I'm not convinced that it's gonna last more than two years, based on how those courts have been over the, over the life of those things. We have fixed what was causing the drainage, but it was having those drainage issues long before I was even on board with the city. So, the, the only way that I know to repair those is to bulldoze them and start, and start from, and start anew on the four lowers. Sorry, Vic.
So, you asked what other plans could we do, what are other backup plans we had? So, I'm just trying to think, you know, as I'm standing here, and now something we've discussed, what if we were to add two more courts at the upper courts? That parking lot's never full unless it's during a fair or something.
Council meetings too.
You can see, we just draw the crowds.
If we were to add two more courts in front of Courts Three and Four, in the, which basically would just be parking lot space plus a little bit of that green space between it, where the, right now, they pile sand, and we can't park anyway. We'd have six courts up there, that would make it a lot more viable tennis club to have six courts instead of-
Put two up here, would you for the other ones down there then?
We make those pickleball.
Or at least you could have, you could at least- Keep two public courts, so you have two free public courts and you put pickleball.
Redo two down there, and then do the rest of the pickleball. And how many pickleball would you get out of, you said it's not as wide, but-
Two full courts.
If you had two courts, you get four.
Is that sufficient for your needs? Like, what, what? That's better than what you got now, which is nothing.
No, I think, I think what the mayor is referring to is if you had that entire area, the, the out of bounds, the court area, and it was nothing but pickleball in that entire square footage, you should be able to get more than just four pickleball courts.
I would think so. We'll go down and look and, and-
Will you get back with me and, well, I don't, I don't mind going down and looking, I don't know how big a pickleball court is, but trying to think that's-
Move the fence, what if you expanded toward that back parking lot? So, you could move that fence and you add one more room.
And how's that change the lights, we gonna do lights still?
Lights, lights gotta be done regardless.
So, there's still a hundred and fifty thousand in.
And I, I think council's starting to get a glimpse, I, I think there's lots of, of more planning, I think there are definitely options. I think there's still additional conversations, especially with these two activities. Croquet, it, it's a little bit simpler, there, there's one spot to put it. Yeah, whereas here, I think there's a, there's, there's a lot of configuring and discussions and, you know, game on, not game on. Yeah, that type thing, which is what led to, to, to my recommendation.
I'd like to meet with you individually, or maybe with another council member or whatever, and maybe we can talk a little bit more in depth soon.
I just want, one quick question. Ballpark, ballpark, build two new courts, ballpark, number?
With lighting, probably talking-
Hold on, Gus.
We got that.
Sixty-five, seventy thousand a court. You've already got an existing building, you got an existing parking lot, so those numbers aren't the same as going down below where we had to add all those things.
One seventy-five.
So, yeah, it's usually fifty-five, sixty thousand a court, and lighting is probably, yeah, it'd probably be more like eighty thousand.
Well, based on the numbers you provided us, to, to do four new courts, three fifty, lighting for the new courts, one fifty, cut the three fifty in half, you're what, one, one twenty-five? Lighting, yeah, eighty thousand, give or take?
One seventy-five plus lighting.
Yeah, one seventy-five, I mean, I think all in cost, you're probably in that two hundred.
Yeah, that was for the, that was for all the courts though. Lighting was for all new lighting.
Right, for, for eight courts, so, yeah.
The lighting's okay, it's up there now.
Couple hundred.
No, I don't think so.
Well, plus- Thanks. So, two and two. So, if, if it cost a hundred and eighty to build eight pickleball courts, would it be ninety thousand to build half of those? To build four?
Again, if you're putting them on existing courts.
Let's table this.
One thing to keep in mind, by the way, if you're gonna have much more pickleball courts down below, that's more people and there is not really enough parking down there. Have a parking issue.
But if we move dirt-
We talked about the parking lot also. Got it.
Okay.
All right, let's wrap it up.
All right, that's, well, at least has another option, that's good, thank you, Vic.
And yeah, I'd be glad to meet with you anytime.
Let's do that.
Thanks.
Anything else anybody wants to discuss? Go ahead, Terry. We'll take public comments.
You're the moral support for croquet.
Forgot about croquet.
We wear white. My name is Terry Hahn, I'm the vice president of the TK Croquet Club. I have behind me Marvin Bennett, he's the president of the TK Croquet Club. We could've had a hundred members here tonight, but Charlie asked us to keep it small. This is our tenth anniversary, we were founded in two thousand and eight. We've been around for two ye, ten, ten years, we've had our court for eight years. We have one of the finest croquet courts in the area. Really, I've been down to Jekyll Island, I've been to Hilton Head.
How big's your area?
Well, I'm talking about North and South Carolina, and I, I just got back from a tournament in Virginia where the, one guy built eight courts. Our courts are far, our court is far superior to his, he's just got a lot more of them. We've, our primary purpose of our club is to provide an informal social environment for people to develop and appreciate the sport of croquet in TK and surrounding areas. Okay, we've done that for the last ten years. We've maintained a membership since we got our first, built the first court, our only court, of over a hundred and ten members a year. We have members, we have a junior program, we have, starting at eight years- Uh, we have members, uh, we have a junior program, we have, starting at eight years old. And some of our members are in, uh, up into their nineties. So, we've got a wide range of members, uh, playing on our courts. Our biggest problem is we don't have enough time for people to play on one court. Eighty percent of the time, Monday through Friday during the days are taken up by regular players. They, they, we have a reservation system, they reserve it. Uh, in order to get more members, we need a second court, period. We could, we could squeeze people in at night and, cuz we got lights and on weekends when it's not used very much. Uh, but we also need to have times for exhibitions and training sessions, uh, and to bring in new members and things like that. Uh, our existing court, the golf club keeps it in excellent condition year round. Uh, we're not complaining about that, the maintenance cost's a little high, but we've got an agreement with the city to, for our club to operate and maintain that court. We've been doing it for eight years. Uh, we've been, even, um, paid for the cost of building most of the court. City came in and did some repairs and paid for that and the lights. But we've also paid for the cost of the gazebo. Our club has probably invested over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars into the, uh, croquet facilities since it's been built. We think we can grow our membership if we had a second court and that's the main reason for doing it. Now, we came up with a, a Plan A and we took it to Charlie a few months ago. And he started talking about the future of tennis. And we said, well, what are you gonna do with these tennis facilities up here at the upper courts if you move it somewhere else? I said, how about two croquet courts there instead of four tennis courts? I said, there's, it's the right area, it's flat, we got a good parking, we got, uh, clubhouse there, which we don't have now, that'd be great. So, we came up with a Plan B. Now, it looks like, uh, Plan B is not gonna happen. So, we developed a spec for Plan A and Plan B and Plan A is right beside the existing court. We did a survey on it, uh, checked the, uh, underground utilities and everything. Those stakes are still out there. We can jump back on that anytime. If Plan B won't work and it doesn't look like it's going to, if these tennis courts don't move, uh, the only other option to get in the second court, we feel like the second court needs to be right beside the first court for tournaments and, uh, uh, things like that. Um, we can jump back to Plan A. Uh, the land, well, first of all, the scope, you'd have to move the sod farm that the golf course has. Uh, Josh and Chuck Smith say they can do it, it'd have to be built into the contract. The contractor would move that sod farm. We did the same thing when we built the first court. They had a chipping green there, they had to move the chipping green and the contractor did that. So, it's possible to get a court in there. The size of the court due to some restraints would not be exactly the same size as the existing court. Be a little bit smaller, but we could almost get a full-size regulation court in that space. There are some restrictions like the bank over next to Molokai, the big, green electrical box down at one end, uh, the light poles, uh, and the cart path and the putting green. We can squeeze a court in there and almost a regulation-sized court. And it'd be ideal for getting extra players in. Uh, that's what we're asking for. Well, all we want is a second court, we don't care where it is, if you put it down here. Now, the cost, not too many people build croquet courts. It has been very difficult to get an estimate. We checked with contractors when we're working on Plan B and we came up with a range. I gave you a range, have you got the executive summary?
Yes.
Okay, I gave you a range there, uh, for two courts on Plan B. Now, one court on Plan A, I haven't costed that out because I've, we switched over to Plan B. It'll probably be like, like you said, between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars, just off the top of my head. There are certain unknowns.
That counts the wall? Retaining wall?
There's, there's gonna have to be a retaining wall on that bank next to Molokai, we're gonna have to cut trees down. Uh, we'll have to put up two extra light poles and put four sets of lights in on that court. That, that's estimating that. This court, these courts over here already had lights.
Right.
If we went to Plan B. Um, and that's just the ballpark, we won't know the exact cost until the, the bids come back in.
Okay.
And I'm just guessing ninety to a hundred thousand dollars on that. You're gonna have to move a storm drain, relocate a storm drain, cuz we're gonna cover up one.
It's probably the easiest part of the project.
Yeah, yeah.
Can, can y'all do that for us?
There, there's two, there's two deep power, high voltage lines that go right under that sod, sod farm he's got out there too, but that, they're deep enough, I don't think we'll bother. We've, we've, we've surveyed the, the, uh, area and we think we can fit a court in there. Uh, there, there's always unknowns. We, we don't wanna disturb the cart path of the putting green, we don't wanna disturb the power box, don't wanna move the light poles. So, we can, we can fit a, uh, almost a regulation-sized court in there.
I think so too.
And I think we're, uh, and from a maintenance standpoint, it'd be just as easy to maintain as the, the one up here. I've talked to Chuck Smith a lot on maintenance and designing both these courts. Uh, we, we developed a spec for Plan A and then we developed a spec, a spec for Plan B. Spec for Plan A hadn't been touched in several months, but it's still good. And that's, that's what we're requesting, a second court. Uh, if you don't have to wait till the tennis courts get torn down and do Plan A, we can do that any day now.
And you'd prefer we start that tomorrow?
And we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
But we think, we think we can grow our membership. Lake Ridge, we got two members over in Lake Ridge and they got, what, six hundred homes, they're gonna have. Uh, Cadence has got a bunch of homes, there's a lot of areas and new people coming in that we haven't even touched and we think we can grow our membership. We just had the time to plug, we need a second court for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any final comments? Everybody, everybody happy out there or any other comments with anybody? Yes, Walt, Walt wants to talk about.
Here goes.
Yeah, I'm done.
Thanks, guys.
Walt Krasinski. Charlie.
Yes.
How much do you need a year to do the police station? To the, the annual debt?
Operating?
Yeah, the. Are you talking operating or just on the capital? How much do you have to take in a year to get us going on the police, or on the police station?
Two seventy-seven.
Two, hold on one second, I'll pull it right up.
Yeah, two seventy-one or something like that.
Two seventy-one.
Two seventeen, that sounds about right, yep.
So, if you did a ten-dollar fee, it would more than double it.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So, you could even go maybe even down to.
Pay off debt, pay off others.
Down to five dollars.
Could.
Correct.
But we're not ma, we're not getting anywhere, we're just maintaining.
Yeah.
We go to ten, we can even pay more, we can help out some of these people with doing some of their tennis, croquet.
Charging, charging five dollars would be the equivalent of doing, of doing the four mil. Right, exactly. Correct. Exactly. Yeah, y, y, you would have the same net effect, yes. And I don't think you wanna go taxes. I think it's, I think you might be better off just going to the ten-dollar garbage fee.
It's kinda the obvious thing to do, right?
Here we go.
Cuz you don't wanna do both, okay, that's all I have.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Walt.
What would you do?
We'll just take a vote with you guys, call it a day.
So, if you guys came, you guys get to decide.
Yeah.
Can you propose that at the next meeting? Pistol range.
Okay, I'll. Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and I have a second. All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.
Walt, you do get a vote if.